It's three o'clock and welcome to anyone that's not here for the earlier meeting with the city. We're going to just continue where we left off and we have one item on the agenda tonight, and it is about condemnation. So, Ms. Thompson. I guess we've lost Commissioner Coleman.
Good afternoon. I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development for Glen County. As you are aware, you all approved a new full-time position to coordinate our abandoned and condemnation process. Her name is Kristy Ulistia, and we hired her in April. She's not here today because she is originally from Indonesia, and she had planned a visit home for the first time in three years, and we told her we could cover it today. So...
Ma'am, tell me her last name again.
Ulistia. U-Y-U-L-I-S-T-I-A.
Where's she from?
Indonesia.
Indonesia.
And she's been with us, like I said, since mid-April, and she has really hit the ground running. After I give my brief presentation, Senior Assistant Attorney Will Worley will talk to you about our nuisance abatement ordinance. But to give you some history, the process originally had been spearheaded by our fire marshal. And when Captain Johnson retired, we looked at that process to see what was the best way to administer it. And we saw that with the ordinance, about eighty percent of the process is actually administrative. It's not the professionals going out in the field and doing field work. So, we've set it up where she can request and assign reviews and inspections by fire department staff or building inspection staff, but then she handles all the administrative functions of sending notices and letters and doing title search and things like that. So, what I wanted to do today was just give you an update of what she has done since she's been here. I want to thank Mickey Milton and his code enforcement team. They have shown her the ropes and have helped her really learn our process. So, these are the overviews, and again, this is just from when she started in April. The categories are just when somebody calls in or reports an abandoned structure, if it's commercial, or if it's a private home, if we've had to take legal action, or if it actually was demolished or cleaned up. So, as you can see, in the last two weeks of April, she worked on six properties, and the month of May, she worked on forty-five. So, she's tried to keep everything in process and keep us moving forward. If you recall, we are going back to the old list we had to see what's resolved itself and what still needs to be enforced, but we were up to over sixty homes on that list. So, she's trying to run through that. Here's some areas where she's had results. One hundred Deerfield, it has been remodeled and renovated, and so it is no longer condemnable. And then, once they get resolved, we just have code enforcement keep an eye out to make sure that they stay up kept. Twelve twenty-two George Lotson, it was demolished. Now, they did not get their demo permit. We will work with that. The main goal is that the structure's gone. Thirty thirty, Thirty Thirty Scarlet Street, Commissioner Brunson, this I think is your favorite property.
I love it.
This has actually been purchased by a new owner, and it's going to become the I Stay Hotel. And the owner has been in. He's going to do extensive remodeling and interior work, and his site plan was approved at the June fourth Mainland Planning Commission. Forty-four fifty-seven Highway seventeen north, the owner did come in and get a demolition permit, and that permit's valid for three months. So, now we set our timer for three months, and if he has not demolished that structure, then we do enforcement action and would take them to court at that time. And just to brag on the condemnation team at this point, we're about eight weeks into her being here, and we've had more progress than we've had in a year probably. So, I think our new approach is working. And again, this is just the reports for how many properties we're working on. And I know many of you are aware of one thirty Billpoint Parkway. There had been a new owner who said that they were going to renovate it, so we withdrew the case from court. I apologize. But time went by and work was not done, so Will resubmitted that, refiled that lawsuit.
That probably has had more head moves than Gail Sayers.
So, this is the report. I'm happy to answer any questions. Mickey and his team are here to answer any questions you have about our current process. And then Mr. Worley's going to get up and explain to you the changes in the ordinance and the flexibility if you all consider adopting this new ordinance will give us in our ability to enforce. All right. I'll turn it over to Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Pam. Real quick further update on Billpoint. Both the defendants in that case have until the end of this week to answer our complaint. So far, they have not. If they don't, then they'll be in default, and we can move for a default judgment on that property.
How long is that going to take?
They have thirty days to answer. So, the thirty days to answer the complaint is up this week. We have to wait additional fifteen days before we can file that. And then it just depends on how soon the judge rules on that motion. So, as Pam said, I'm going to talk a little bit. We're proposing to amend our nuisance abatement ordinance. To talk to you a little bit about the process we've been following and the ordinance we've been using so far for these properties, we have a, separate from our nuisance abatement ordinance, we have an ordinance in the books that's under the sort of the fire department. And it's kind of general in that it says that, you know, the fire marshal or fire inspector will go out, determine if the property is unsafe, and then allows the county to file an action in spirit court against that property to then try to get an order to have it repaired, demolished. I think we really have only ever gone against properties that need to be demolished and not repaired. As y'all know, our longtime fire marshal retired last year, and he was the one that was heading up that whole thing from inspection to report to getting it to our office. And we've been talking for a while about maybe a need to change that process. And so, under the state statutes, there's a nuisance abatement process that allows building inspectors, folks like that, code enforcement to go out and inspect properties and determine whether they're unfit for human habitation or in need of repair. And so, what we're proposing is that we amend our ordinances to follow that procedure rather than the one we've been doing so far. There's not going to be a whole lot of difference between the two on a macro level. The nuances of the changes are going to be a little bit more. We are going to have building inspectors, folks that are trained in that sort of thing, to go out and look at the condition of the property and determine if it's unsafe, structurally, you know, unsafe, that sort of thing. We'll have more clear criteria in the ordinance as to what constitutes an unsafe condition. Under our previous scheme, it was kind of a more you-know-it-if-you-see-it kind of thing. The building inspectors go in, they'll do a report. If they determine that the house or building cannot be repaired at a reasonable cost, we'll ask the court to demolish it. If they determine that it's unsafe, but the repairs can be done at a reasonable cost, then we'll go to the court and ask that the owner be required to do the repairs to make it safe. The other big change will be we'll be going through magistrate court rather than superior court. Right now, we go to superior court. We file our complaint. Thirty days for them to answer. If they don't answer, then we can go file a motion for default judgment. And there's no time limit on how long the judge has to consider that. Sometimes they're right on it. Sometimes it takes them a month or two before they give us an order on that. If the owner actually files an answer, then we're, you know, further and further out. Sometimes it can take a few months before we get to a hearing. Under this ordinance and under state law, if we go through magistrate court, the magistrate court will set a hearing no sooner than fifteen and no later than forty-five days after we file the complaint. We'll have to mail out notice to the owner of the complaint. We won't necessarily have to have them served by the sheriff or anything like that. You can do it by certified mail. If you don't know the location of the owner, you can tack up notice of it at the property, and that will give them notice. So, we should be able to shorten that time to get a hearing from what we're currently doing now and shorten that up to no more than forty-five days. If the court determines it needs to be demolished, they'll issue an order, giving the person a certain amount of time to demolish it. And if that doesn't happen, the county will be able to go and do it themselves, place a lien on the property. If they determine that it can be repaired at a reasonable cost, then they'll issue an order telling them to do those repairs within a certain amount of time. And then, if we do end up having to demolish it or do the work ourselves, then we will be able to file a lien by going to the tax commissioner, giving the tax commissioner notice of the lien amount, and then the tax commissioner would enforce that lien just as they would a lien for ad liborum taxes. So, the biggest changes will be we'll have building inspectors doing the front-end inspection and determination. We'll be going through magistrate court rather than superior court, which should shorten up the timeframe. And the procedure for getting a lien on the property will be just a little bit more straightforward. Right now, what we do is we go back to the court, get another order for costs, then just record a five A, wait for the property to sell, if it ever does, before we collect our money. And in this instance, we'll just be able to issue a notice to the tax commissioner to put a lien on the property, just like an ad liborum tax lien. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
What are you bringing this stuff?
I think community development staff has just given the ordinance one more look over to make sure that there's nothing they want to change or have questions about, and then I think we're ready to move it forward at that time.
Sounds like to me that we're going from the way it had been, you know, when the fire department was involved in condemning the structures, to, I guess that was a big driver, you know, getting things going. And now, we're going to have community development department who's going to take the calls, you know, from the community. You know, we've got a problem with a neighbor's house or a house down the road, and so, we're going to look at that. Somebody in your department's going to get that on a list, and they're going to contact, I guess it's fire department there, if they're going to still look at the condemnation of the structure. Is that right, the fire department?
They could be one of the inspections. What we've been doing so far is asking the fire department to inspect it as well as our building inspections, just so that we can, we're making sure, because, you know, the fire marshal knows those codes. But to let you know, so Kristy Ulistia is the coordinator of this program, and she's been working with Andrew Strickland in GIS, that we're going to have a map available on our website where we already have every structure that has been reported to us, and is it in process so that you can look. So, not only can citizens call customer service, if they want to go to this map, they can see if the house they're concerned about is already listed. And then they'll be able to report from that website, from that application, to report a structure. So, we're trying to put the information out there, because I know sometimes several neighbors will call about one house, just so that they know that we have it in our system.
So, we don't necessarily have to have an inspector from the fire department go out and condemn?
Not if you adopt the draft ordinance that will be coming to you. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I think that's good. Nothing against fire department, but...
Right. And that being said, they've been completely cooperative, and they are more than willing to go out and do fire inspections also, just to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Just so people know, Commissioner Brunson and I have sat in on a lot of these condemnation meetings and looked at this very long, long list.
We hadn't made much progress.
And boy, it was slow to see progress, and there was a lot of effort going into it. Oh, I can tell you, there's a lot of effort going into it. And we're talking about code enforcement, fire folks doing condemnation. But I tell you, the legal department, what they have to do, my hat is off to them. It's not as simple as condemning it, and then we can go out there in thirty days, tear something down. A lot of legal work involved in it. But that being the case, you know, we have a lot of structures here in Glen County that need to be looked at. There were a lot on that list already. So, that list is going to be incorporated into the...
Yes, sir. She took all the files and lists left from the condemnation team, just because staffing-wise, we weren't able to put a lot of attention to it after Captain Johnson retired. And so, she's gone through and verified the status of those and made her own tracking documents and NFOR. And to say Ms. Ulistia is high-energy is an understatement. She wants to keep the county safe and get it cleaned up, and she has been mailing out letters and has really been proactive in it. So, for as long as y'all like, I'm happy to come back, and you can meet her next time, maybe quarterly or every six months, and give you an update on where we are. Because it's such an administrative process, we actually have streamlined it and don't have those long meetings where we don't necessarily get too far. So, we've tried to automate it as much as possible.
Well, look, I mean, it ought to be an onerous process. I'm not saying you ought to just be able to go and tear somebody's house down because the grass is, you know, growing up over the windows. It's going to have property rights, and it ought to be an onerous process. But at the end of the day, we ought to be able to help these neighborhoods that are living in this blight that's just plaguing.
Yes, sir. And I think you all made that commitment when you created her position. That is her job, is to get things through this process. So...
I'm excited, though.
Good.
How many is on the list?
Over sixty. And what we decided to do was, rather than trying to tackle sixty at one time, especially when we're getting ready to bring y'all a new ordinance, was to take about the fifteen worst homes and start with those. So, she's still reaching out, and she's gotten some compliance, but the ones where we're focusing her energies are on those, kind of the worst fifteen that we have reported right now.
So, what does this do? I mean, it's just refile the lawsuit, starting all over again? I mean...
Yes, sir. We had, so if you'll remember on this one, we had filed the action against one thirty Billpoint Parkway. The owner did not respond to the complaint. We had obtained a default judgment against the owner. There's a second defendant in that case, another company that has a lien against the property. Their time to answer had not run out at that time. But we got contacted by a real estate agent who said that they had a pending closing for that property at the end of November. And the only thing preventing them from closing, they said at the time, was our legal action that was pending against the property. And they said, if y'all can dismiss that, we'll close this property in a week or two. We'll have the house torn down by the end of the year. County won't have to do it themselves. And so, I think we came to y'all and said, are y'all okay with that? And everyone said that was great. So, we dismissed the lawsuit. We have six months to refile. So, that was, I think, end of November. They just never closed on the property. And I think back in February, March, somewhere around that time, we finally, you know, they kept telling us, well, something's processing, something's processing. We're going to close hopefully in the next couple of weeks, next couple of weeks. And then finally, we were kind of bumping up against our deadline to refile, and so, we just went ahead to refile.
What I'm told on that piece of property are there liens against the owner on it, and they can't come to an agreement on settling the liens. So, they can't get to a payoff number. So, it can't be, they can't get to a closure.
That's what I've been told, too. Our title search only showed one recorded lien on the property, and we've served that party in this lawsuit. Maybe they have some information we haven't been able to determine, but...
And I asked about it again just two weeks ago, and there were two more liens that surfaced. So, I don't know. I'd be interested to know.
You know, we can't predict anything, but like I said, Thursday is one of the defendant's deadlines to answer the suit. The other one has until Monday next week. If it's anything like last time, neither one of them will file a response to the suit, and then we'll move for a default judgment. But they could always answer, and then we'll move on from there.
Bob, what's the guy that's head of the HOA? Who's the guy that's head of the HOA? I can't call his name about that long. But Will, on this right here, I mean, this thing's been hanging around a long time. Why couldn't, is there something wrong with putting some sort of a health issue up on it and saying, you know, this has been here this long, all this stuff. You've got all, you know, just right next door, a big wooded lot. You've got a bunch of wild animals running around out there. I mean, let's forget about the tremendous eyesore for the whole subdivision. If we could throw a health issue up out there, and I mean, why couldn't we come in there and just file eminent domain on it, take it over, bulldoze the thing, go down the road with it?
Well, as Commissioner Brunson said earlier, anytime you're going to go on private property and then tear down a structure, it's not a fast process. You know, at the very least, we've got to do a title search to determine who has an interest in the property. They have to have their due process rights before you can go out there. So, that, a lot of it...
I mean, it's not a tear down. It's a scoop up and haul off. It's a thing to burn to the ground.
But just to go out there and even do that, you know, we have to, the law requires us to find out who has an interest in the property, give them an opportunity to remedy that. Then, if we go to the lawsuit route, we have to go the lawsuit route. You know, if it were an imminent danger, you know, if it were going to, you know, I can't really think of the scenario, but, you know, if you had some imminent danger to property or humans, you might be able to get an emergency hearing before the judge, but you're still going to have to go through that court process no matter what.
Obviously, don't care. I mean, if we did, he'd already had this done a long time ago. He had the money in his pocket at one time to do it, his insurance company. So, what is going to be the benefit? I mean, we file a lawsuit, we win, so what?
So, once we get that order saying we can tear it down, so the end result's going to be the same. The changes are going to be more on the front end. So, you know, under this ordinance, like I said, you know...
That, what you're saying, if all this goes through, we win the lawsuit, which I'm sure we will, that's just giving us permission to tear it down.
Right.
Okay. Then what we do, I mean, we're going, I mean, this guy's got, I mean, liens on the property. He obviously don't care who he owes.
So, our past practice has always been to record a lien on the property and then just sit back and wait. And if the property changes hands, someone buys it, then they come in and they pay the lien. I think maybe once or twice, we've had the property owner come in and pay us to clear the lien off their property. But we've never really been proactive to go out and foreclose on these liens, if you will. This new ordinance won't really, well, it'll change that a little bit in that, so right now, we'll go get an order from the court for a certain amount of money. We take that over to the Superior Court Clerk's office. They issue a five A. We record that, and then it sits there unless something happens. Under this new procedure, if y'all adopt it, we'll send a notice to the tax commissioner. Tax commissioner will put a lien on that property and then can proceed to do a tax sale for that lien, just like they do for ad liborum taxes. So, that'll be one change in how...
That would take a year, right?
Yeah.
I think once the property's cleaned up, you know, the parking meter sort of calmed down a little bit. You know, it's not dealing with the same eyesore.
And as far as the timing goes, so, again, the main condensing under this new ordinance will be the amount of time until we get a hearing. Typically, when we file these to superior court, you know, we get put on a calendar with other cases. Sometimes it's a divorce calendar. Sometimes it's a criminal, you know, please calendar. It's wherever they can fit us in. So, you know, we might, so this one's a good example. We file our complaint. It usually takes a couple of days to serve the defendant. They then have thirty days from the date of service to answer the complaint. If they don't answer, so now we're already, you know, thirty-five days. If they don't answer, we can't file for a default judgment until they've been in default for forty-five days. So, now you're fifty days out before you can even file your motion for a default judgment. Sometimes the judge...
That's been done before here, right?
Right. But when we dismiss...
Did we answer?
No. So, the first time we filed, there was no response. But when we dismissed that case and refiled, we just started over. So, you know, you file your default judgment, you're about fifty days in by that point. Sometimes the judges are, give you an order within a couple of days. Sometimes it may take them a few weeks to get you an order. So, now we're sixty days from the date of, once we get that order, come to y'all, y'all authorize demolition, public works goes down, demolishes it. So, you're looking at at least two months or so, and that's if you don't get a response and the court's on it like that. If you do have a response, the court sets a hearing. They'll have a hearing. Sometimes they'll issue an order immediately. Sometimes they'll wait a couple of weeks for the issue of that order. So, that can all make that time. Under this new ordinance, the magistrate court will set a hearing no later than forty-five days after the complaint has been filed.
You go in front of a judge like that, though, I mean, is it significant to give him the day-to-day facts about the thing? It burned down. It's been sitting there for two years. You've got neighbors...
It burned down, it's been sitting there for two years, you've got neighbors within, you know, 50 feet all the way around.
Typically, what we've done is we've concentrated on the condition of the property. And most of the ones we've taken have been in just such poor, really, in my experience, all the judge has to do is read the report from the fire marshal and look at the pictures. It's pretty self-evident at that point. I mean, most of the ones, they're missing roofs, they've been burned, you know, the windows are all open, and the doors are, it doesn't have any doors on it. It's pretty evident just from looking at the, you know, and the judge looks at it as the evidence. You know, I think under this new system, we will have a little bit more of a detailed report from building inspectors and that sort of thing, saying, "These are exactly the things that are wrong with it. Here are the codes that they're not meeting, here's why it is unsafe for human habitation." So, I think we'll have a little bit more detail on those things.
I mean, you've seen it, obviously. You've seen pictures of it.
Oh, yeah. Every one that we've taken to court, I've, yeah, I've seen.
I mean, no doors, no windows, not even worth mentioning.
Yeah. I mean, most of the time, the judges see the pictures in the report, and, you know, they don't, I think maybe once or twice...
I saw Ron a couple of weeks ago, man, and I tell you, he took Mary out in there on his back patio, looking for what they got to look at every single day, sitting around their pool, and, uh, pretty pathetic.
And I'll say one more thing, too. I think under the old process, you know, fire department go out, do their inspection, do their report. They had to send a letter to the owner of the property. Our ordinance says that they have 45 days to answer that letter. So, the fire department had to send these letters out and then wait a month and a half to see if the person responded. Then, if they didn't, they would forward that to our office, at which point, we would do a title search, which usually takes at least two weeks to get back. Then, we'd get the title search back, we'd have to look through it often, you know, "Oh, it turns out this person's not actually the owner of the property, or there's other people that have an interest in the property. We have to go back and notify and give them their time." So, that all on the front end also added a lot of time to these things from the date we got a complaint until we can even get to court. I think under this new system, all that grunt work is going to kind of be done on the front end. So, title search, by the time it makes it to our office, title search, everything else is going to be done. It's going to be a package ready for us to, you know, put into complaint form and file with the court.
It seems to me that the difficult ones are, you know, like this one where, you know, we're getting ready to do something, and then the real estate agent comes up and says, "Hey, I think I got somebody, well, you know, we want to, we got a kind heart. Okay, we don't want to go tear it down, or somebody's going to buy it." And so, we let them work that out. Well, they didn't work it out.
We learned to, we learned to listen, didn't we?
I don't know whether we did or not. I really don't.
But guys, here's the thing, when you start talking about real estate. If that lien that's on that property is greater than what that property is worth as a lot, less the cost of demolition, that's all the offer you're going to get on that piece of property, ever. So, that's where, that's where this thing is. It's not worth the judgments or the liens that are against it. So, who's going to, who's going to clean that up? Well, we can, but here's the deal. Here's the deal, you know, up until somebody, and everybody has said, "Well, we don't, we don't care if you do tear it down." Even at that point, we got to get a judge to sign off on it, right? We got to see, and that can be, that can be problematic in terms of time. It's not, we're not going to walk in there and walk right out with an order to tear something down, usually. And just a legal lien, and that's what I was talking about earlier when I had solved to the legal side of this thing. You know, for them to go to court and get a judge, if all the other players are in agreement, you know, "Tear it down, we have no opposition." But when we go to court, you know, if a judge has any question, you know, he's got to be convinced, it seems to me now, he's got, judge's got to be convinced that there's nobody out there that's going to want to do anything with this property. You know, that's what it seems like, you know, wants to be darn sure there's not a, you know, an investor or somebody's got an interest in that property that doesn't want to do anything before he says, "Yeah, go tear it down." We have got to make a heck of a solid case. And once we do that, then we can get an order. But it can take time. I mean, again, Commissioner Brunson and I sat in on these meetings, and staff was doing all they could on a lot of these, and something would come up. You know, they find something on a piece of property that had a little stain behind it that we were going to get tore down, and then we couldn't get it torn down. You know, take the hotel out there on 17, we come in here so close one day, and then owner come up, said he thought he had somebody going to buy it, so we backed off.
Well, I mean, wouldn't let us own the property to do an environmental assessment.
And I mean, we'd like to see... Like to see the owner take care of it, and then just get us out of it.
Wayne, what you talking about, $10,000 max?
Max. Max. I don't know what...
We ain't talking...
But somebody's got a judgment on it for a greater amount of money than that, is my understanding.
Yeah, I don't remember that...
They filed a lien, and they don't want to settle their lien for less than, so...
We can sit and talk all day about 130 Bell Point. I think that's going to get done. But we got 60 more out there and growing. They ain't decreasing, they're going the other way. And every now and then, you hit a home run like this Starling Street property, and I've never envisioned that was going to live, but it did. I mean, you're talking about a train wreck, an environmental and health issue, that was it. And all of a sudden, we got somebody fixing to rebuild the darn thing, so...
Commissioner, if I could say, I think the biggest resource y'all have given us is this dedicated position, because every team member before, we were doing it in addition to our other daily duties. And we now have someone that is learning this ordinance in and out. If y'all approve the proposed one that's going to come to you as soon as it can, she knows this process, and that is what her job is. And so, yes, there's 60, but if you look at it, she's already made, you know, 46 contacts in one month. So, they're at all different points in the process, but we now have somebody that that's their priority. And her email's on there, and we'll prominently put it on the page when we have that app available. But anybody that's out in the field, if y'all get a call, our customer service, we need to know what's on the list. And as soon as we get one off the list, put them on. You know, it is environmental health, it is quality of life, and it's safety. And we don't want those attractive nuisances out there where somebody may get hurt. So, we have now the resources to be able to really focus and prioritize on this process.
Tell them to draw a sword and go after it.
Yes, sir.
We've got to just put some teeth in it. I mean, we could do this from now until doomsday, but...
Yes, she has job security, that's for sure.
Commissioner Booker had asked a question about whether the land bank could be used in this process. Aaron may be more familiar with the land bank than I am, but I know we can transfer tax deeds that we hold to them. I don't know if we could transfer liens for demolition to them for them to, you know, I know we've done it several times already. We've transferred tax deeds that we own on property to them for them to try to foreclose on. I don't know if the same thing is available for these kinds of liens.
And the reason I brought it up was that if we ever give it to that point where we can transfer, I guess, the tax commissioner over, I thought when we did that, when the guy came down and did that presentation for us to get involved, he said that there was a mechanism to move forward with us being able to get the property either faster or some kind of pressure that could be put for the owners to either do something or go ahead and...
Yeah, I wasn't there for that presentation, so I wasn't sure.
I think that's pre-us getting, Alan, I think what he was talking about, in other words, if the land bank took it before we demolished it, took ownership, had the deed secured out or whatever we got, liens or whatever, then the land bank could expedite that process, is, was my understanding anyway, and I may be wrong. But after we do everything, and then we give it to the land bank, then it's all over, everything's done.
I will say that a lot of times, these properties that come to us in this condition do have back taxes that are owed on them. And it's happened on more than a handful of occasions that when we do a title search for the property, it turns out that there is a county held tax deed in the chain of title. Now, those would be eligible to be transferred to the land bank for them to do something. And we try to look out for that, and that's one of the things we'll be looking out through this process. But I think, actually, all the ones that we've transferred to them so far have been that kind of situation.
All right, commissioners, let's go. When is this, is the ordinance already, the change already written?
Yes, I have drafted it.
Is it on the agenda for Thursday?
No, sir. We'll need to take it through the appropriate public hearings, but we've received that direction from you, so we'll finish our few comments to Will and then get that started towards y'all.
Okay. Any problems with going forward with it?
No, I'm good, sir.
Yeah. Thank you.
My way, John.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, you got anything for the next session?
Yes, sir.
There being, we adjourn this meeting.